Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of September 25th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. It's so good to have you participating. Sorry to keep you waiting. We have some B.C. students from Professor Bowler's class. Thank you so much for being here. We have interpreters present for the Spanish language, and they'll provide instructions for those who need them. Would you come forward at this point and then just translate into Spanish and let people know that if anybody needs the equipment, to go ahead and get that?
Buenas tardes o buenas noches. Este, mi nombre es Fernando Lopez, y atrás en el sillón está mi compañera Delilah. Estamos aquí para interpretar del inglés, el español, y el español, el inglés. Atrás de la mesa están unos audífonos, unos dispositivos para que puedan participar. Gracias.
Thank you. And we're so blessed to have him as an interpreter. He can do it at the same time, listen and interpret. A helpful reminder for all of you who are presenting and giving comments tonight, for the benefit of our interpreter and those in the audience, please pace yourself and speak clearly into the microphone during your comments, and this will help our interpreter to clearly translate your message. We have the pleasure tonight of having Reverend Jason Thornton, who's the senior pastor of First Bakersfield United Methodist Church. We welcome him here from Antigua, where he was the senior pastor over there. And pastors, thank you so much for your church donating blood, and I saw that you're donating at the fair, but you're also donating at the church and having your congregants donate blood right after the church service. So thank you so much for being here today. And then following following the invocation, the 2024 Bakersfield Pageant title holders will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We are blessed to have the Bakersfield Pageant. While they are beautiful, this has nothing to do with the beauty contest, they are here to serve. And for the many events, the charity events that we go to, they're oftentimes the behind-the-scenes people, along with Kimberly Price, leading that, cleaning up, getting things set up way before any one of us arrived. For 30 years, the Bakersfield Pageant has actively engaged with nonprofits and dedicated their time to resources to support their initiatives. Mrs. Bakersfield Nyla Hogan is the CEO and Executive Director of Y Empowerment. She's also an advocate for child abuse and domestic violence prevention. Mrs. Bakersfield Brandy Scott is a special education program specialist and a breast cancer awareness advocate. And then our Ms. Teen Bakersfield, Ms. Young is a junior honor roll student and ASB president at Valley Oaks Charter School. And so at this time, I would invite our pastor to come up. Would you please stand?
Please pray with me. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, and Lord of us all, we give you thanks for this day and this gathering of the leaders and citizens of Bakersfield, California. As we meet here tonight, we pray you bless us with your wisdom, make us quick to listen, to have compassion for the needs of others, and to have a mind to find just solutions. Guide us in all our conversations and decisions, that peace grows from our time together, and through our work, the people and land of Bakersfield thrive with your grace. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, the Bakersfield Pageant and Pastor, thank you also very much. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presentations during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Jennifer Henry, Executive Director of Links for Life, declaring Paint the Town Pink Month in Bakersfield during October 2024.
Welcome. Introduce the members. Well, it's my pleasure to be here with Jennifer Henry. She's going to introduce her guests. And what we have to recognize is mothers, daughters, sisters, our friends are impacted by this invasive disease. Entire families and communities are affected. Early detection saves lives. It's my honor to issue this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed October 2023 as Paint the Town Pink Month in our city in recognition of the more than 400 Kern County community members who will be diagnosed with breast cancer annually, and in recognition of the nearly 100 who will bravely lose the fight, in recognition of the unwavering support of family and friends offering sanctuary and encouragement to loved ones in the midst of treatment, in recognition of Links for Life and other organizations committed to increasing awareness and finding a cure for breast cancer, in recognition of the importance of raising public consciousness and securing funding for research, and in recognition of the efforts to unite our community through awareness and personal experiences by displaying the color pink during the month of October. We celebrate the more than 4 million breast cancer survivors, give hope to those in the battle, and honor with respect those we have lost. Thank you, Links for Life, for your more than 30 years of service to our community. Jennifer, it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation to you. Please offer comments and introduce.
Thank you so much for having us for 32 years, joining you here in the chamber. I'd like to introduce Brandy, and she is Ms. Bakersfield, and she is also a breast cancer survivor and our Hot Pink Speaker for our event on October 25th. And Heather over here, McMahon, she is a Development Manager for Links for Life. So a little bit about Links. Thank you all for having us. As I said, we're 32 years old, and October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and you better have your pink on, so y'all know. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, so if you go to a banquet, and I'm sure you all do, one of the people at your table, if you're all women, will have breast cancer. Join us on October 5th, which is Lacing it Up, and it's at the Park at Riverwalk. Come, join us. We'd love to have somebody proclaim October Pink, the Town Pink Month that day. Unfortunately, Mayor Go is going to be out of town, so Vice Mayor Gonzalez, I would love to have you join me. This past year, we provided 143 mammograms and diagnosed two women with breast cancer who had otherwise gone without treatment. 513 attended between our four support groups. On the average, we have 80 survivors in our nutrition and grocery card program, and we provided 631 grocery cards to women in active treatment this past year. Dignity Health Community Grant funded us to bring in a mobile mammography unit to provide mammograms to our community at no charge. This mobile unit costs us $6,500 every time we bring it in, and we can screen 30 women without insurance, who can help them go in and be treated if they are diagnosed. We would love to have your assistance in bringing this mobile mammography in more frequently to our community. We are 100% local, we have no federal or state funding, and we have no national office other than Bakersfield, so thank you for supporting Links for Life, and we hope to see you at all our pink events. In your little bag, all 19 are listed in there, and you could just appear at one or a few. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
As you're taking a photo, Ms. Henry, thank you so much for your leadership throughout the years at Links for Life. You've provided so much vision and heart and compassion. I know many of my constituents in War II have benefited from your work over the years, and I just want to thank you for your partnership and leadership with the city, but also just in general in the community, and I know my colleagues share the same vision.
In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different
times depending on the item. I'll call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Kim Price, followed by Jonathan Yates, followed by Leah Carter.
We have some documents for the council members.
Go ahead and give them to the city clerk.
Good evening, council members and attendees. My name is Nyla Hogan, and I am Mrs. Bakersfield 2024, and I am here with my fellow title holders. I have Jenna Young, who is Ms. Teen Bakersfield, and Brandy Scott, who is Ms. Bakersfield 2024. Not in attendance is Cameron Young, who is, I'm sorry, Cameron Wilson, who is our Ms. Bakersfield. We are here representing the Bakersfield Pageant and 30 years of excellence. This evening, we want to talk about our pageant and the diverse women who serve and represent Bakersfield. While many pageants focus on superficial beauty, the Bakersfield Pageant proudly stands as a program where title holders serve and give back and represent the City of Bakersfield with our core values, which are character, commitment, choices, community, and compassion. These core values are the foundation of the Bakersfield Pageant. We take our titles seriously as we represent the City of Bakersfield with humble confidence. This year, the Bakersfield Pageant will have the opportunity to serve over 90 community events. Thus far, we have had the opportunity to do things such as package food, helping with various nonprofit events, serve breakfast to veterans, comfort children who have lost loved ones while serving in the line of duty, lay wreaths on the headstones of our national heroes, participate in multiple community ceremonies, and much more. It is truly an honor of ours to serve in this community. The Bakersfield Pageant is coming up on the 31st anniversary, and we encourage any ladies who are interested in any of our four categories to join us at the Pageant Orientation, which will be held on Monday, December 9th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Bakersfield Christian High School Library. There's more information on this at our website, the Bakersfield, I'm sorry, bakersfieldpageant.com. We are honored to continue to partner with you, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all of you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Jonathan Yates, followed by Leah Carter, followed by Carmen.
I could get some help from the clerk to pass these to the clerk. Thank you. Do that. Members of the City Council, thank you so much. My name is Jonathan Yates, and I'm here representing the Kern Gateway Trail Committee, which is sponsored by the Kern River Parkway Foundation. As a transplant to Bakersfield, I fell in love with the Kern Canyon immediately after moving here. It is stunningly close, jaw-droppingly dramatic. It rivals some of the best scenic terrain that America's most outdoorsy cities would be proud to display. The problem is, there's no accessible hiking in the Kern Canyon. The closest parts of the Kern Canyon just can be driven through. You can't stop, you can't hike there, you can't really enjoy this beautiful place where the Kern River cuts through the Sierra Nevada Mountains. So the frustration I had about this led to the creation of the Kern Gateway Trail Team, and we've developed a proposal for over 15 miles of hiking trail in the lowest part of the Kern Canyon. Most of this is on US forest land, and we know that there are already existing trails here, and we want to connect them into a network of trails that residents of Kern County and Bakersfield will be able to enjoy. Our proposal is to work with Forest Service, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and Southern California Edison to create this trail. We have a petition with over 2,100 signatures that I've shared with members of the council, and hope you will take the opportunity to read it, and we really want to make this trail a reality, and think it's super critical that we have support of our elected officials for this quality of life amenity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Next speaker, please. Comment? Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've actually hiked on portions of this trail and think it's a great idea, and if I could, I'd like to refer staff to prepare a resolution that we're in support of it. It's not in the city, but it's something very close to the city and would be an amenity, so if we could do that and bring it back to council at a period of date, I would appreciate it.
Same thing. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to also say that I've had an opportunity to hike a portion of this trail and love it, and think that more folks from throughout Bakersfield ought to have an opportunity to do so, and so I concur with Councilmember Smith. We ought to move forward with the resolution and continue to push forward and see how the City of Bakersfield can be a partner, along with the Kern Gateway Trail Group, to help make this happen as a world-class amenity for our entire community. Thank you.
Councilmember Cor.
Excuse me. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Smith's referral and really support the idea, and thank you for bringing this forward. We're constantly thinking of ways to get our families outdoors within Kern County, within the city, and to know that this is such a close drive away, and to really spend time outdoors in a meaningful way, and to design it and for it to be an actual trail, something tangible that folks can be guided down and engage multigenerationally, I think, is incredibly special, so just wanted to echo my support. Thank you for bringing it to the council.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Leah Carter. I'm also with the Kern Gateway Trail with Johnny. I'm also a registered dietitian, a public health advocate, and the organizer of a local hiking club of over 3,000 members. All of the members in this hiking club are super excited about the Kern Gateway Trail. We have traveled all over the world to hike, and many of the members are very excited about this. All of the members are very excited about the trail because it will bring people to Bakersfield, it will make Bakersfield look good, it will increase the money coming into Bakersfield because people will travel to come here. We also are excited because, as a public health advocate, and I'm sure many of you know that we have a high rate of obesity, diabetes, heart disease in Kern County, and supporting things that get people up and moving are what we need to do to help our population be healthier. I don't have to ask for support because you've already said you're going to support this, so I will conclude my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Carmen, followed by Cecilia.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. This is Christian Gray, Patty Gray's son. He was harassing people and assaulting people out in front of City Hall. Still, nothing has been done, absolutely nothing. I'm here to oppose the $100,000 given for landlord legal assistance. Funds should be allocated to give people housing and to keep people from living on A man was lynched yesterday. His name was Marcellus Williams, a state sanctioned killing, having spent the last 24 years on death row for a crime that DNA evidence proves he did not commit. I will read his last statement. "All praise be to Allah in every situation." I will leave you with words from Y.K. Hong. "May my breath continue until abolition. May my tears never stop until we tear down the system. May my rage never dwindle until we free all beings. May my heart never recover so that we will revolt forever. Free Palestine and all oppressed people."
Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Cecilia Marcial.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone and speak up, please?
I am a nurse in the City of Bakersfield, and I stand here as a healthcare worker for Palestine. I am here because I believe in a Palestina Libre, and I understand the interconnections between the imperialism the United States inflicts on the world and the oppression we face at home. The people in this chamber do not deserve your votes or your loyalties. They do not care about you. They will criminalize our words because they would rather see us imprisoned than hear the truth. That's why there's so many police in this chamber, because our words threaten their existence. Our words are enough to inflict state sanctioned violence. They would rather represent landlords than our right to equitable housing. They only care that we keep funding their wars. They would rather see us dead than protect our right to health care. In the United States, as many as 45,000 people die each year due to lack of health care, and it's time that we came together to care for each other as a community, to defend ourselves against imperialist governments that fund genocide and criminalize, marginalize people for being in their way. It's time we come together for Palestine. And I would just like to say that we're here, we're at your table, and you still constantly ignore us. What else do we have to do? For everyone else in this room, it's very easy. They just come here and you agree with them, you don't even look at us, you don't talk to us. Where is our representation? Not in this chamber.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker for non-agenda items.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, item 6A, or items listed under Consent Calendar, item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The Consent Calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on new business, item 12A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on appointments, item 6A, or Consent Calendar, item 7?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for appointments, item 6A, nor for Consent Calendar items.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Consent Calendar, item 7A to 7I for approval. I apologize, Mayor. Appointments, item 6A, 2024 CalCities Conference Delegate.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As is typical each year, as we send council members to attend the California League of Cities Conference, there are limited action or policy items on which the city is asked to take a voting position, and we invite the council to identify a delegate and alternate each year. What's something new is that you can identify up to two delegates if you so desire going forward, but this is the time for council to appoint a delegate, and the process typically is by nomination from a council member on the dais or another council member, and that could include the delegate and two alternates, or it could include just the delegate and subsequent action could be taken if there's a desire to still have an alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. I don't see any requests to speak at any nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Arias to be our voting delegate to the California League of Cities General Assembly.
Alternate.
Is there a council member who'd like to be the alternate? Councilmember Cor? All right. And I'd like to also nominate Councilmember Cor to be the alternate delegate. Thank you, Councilmember Cor. That's my motion.
Correct. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor, if I can ask a question on this item?
Yes, sir.
Question for Christian and maybe Anthony. Are there, maybe it's a little too early, but do we have any do we think that there's going to be any major items for the delegation to vote on?
It's in your packet. There's just one.
Would love to hear more about that.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Anthony Valdez, Assistant City Manager. There is one resolution that was provided. The one resolution was created by a city down south and asks the state to have the same rules for state lawmakers as local governments with open meeting laws. And there's still an option for folks to submit resolutions via the petition process ahead of the General Assembly, so there may be additional resolutions that the Assembly gets.
Great. That's all. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion was approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Next item, please.
Consent Calendar, items 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you, colleagues. Does anyone wish to recuse? I saw Councilmember, where'd he go? He's supposed to read it. Oh. All right. Do you have it? We're going to move forward. So Councilmember Freeman is recusing himself.
Councilmember Freeman is not at the dais at this moment, so I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Where's this? Let's just see the reason.[1789.19] Right. Madam City Attorney, do you need the reason read for the record?
Mayor, if I understand it, Councilmember Freeman is just simply not here. It's not that he was recusing himself.
Oh, okay, he was earlier. Okay, we're good now. Next item, please.
Motion was approved with Councilmember Freeman absent. New Business, Item 12A. Approve Neighborhood Stabilization and Prevention Program Funding Priorities.
Before we begin, please note that if you're here to speak on New Business, Item 12A, the city clerk will call for public statement after staff's presentation. So each speaker will be limited to a two-minute time limit. There will be a 20-minute time limit per item. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a brief presentation tonight. Provide an outline for this item, and want to, as that presentation is coming up, want to remind the council that this is a topic that we have discussed a couple of times in recent months. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that this is in follow-up to some of those prior conversations. We heard this item in June and July of this year to take a look at some of our prevention services that we offer related to housing. And then staff has taken a step back and provided a little bit of a broader perspective to consider this as neighborhood stabilization. And some of these slides are just reminders again that we've taken a strategic look to consider items that are in our Homeless Collaborative Action Plan. There are numerous strategies, but some of those focus specifically on prevention. We also have our Affordable Housing Strategy that has actions that are related to prevention services as well as other more proactive steps. And then also our own housing element, as it's being drafted and adopted, has multiple strategies, one of which is focused on preserving housing. And there are multiple strategies focused on prevention and stabilization. And so this is reflective of, again, a broader picture around multiple different strategies. This is, again, a reminder to council, these are programs that are already city-funded and in city implementation. We spend $100,000 a year on fair housing. Our Home Buyer Assistance Program has roughly $250,000 a year that goes into different outreaches, as well as we have funding to help with home buyer, first-time home buyer assistance. We also have funded tenant-based rental assistance. You'll recall during the pandemic, there were significant funds that were made available by the federal government, but the city has actually set aside $4.5 million through different funding sources. These are largely funds that have come from state or federal sources, but we also set aside $750,000 of general fund one-time monies to extend the rental assistance program. Earlier this calendar year, as well as $250,000 that was set aside to create a rental barrier removal fund. And we also have funds in this year's Housing and Urban Development Department allocations, our home funds that have been dedicated to assist with rental assistance after the same pattern that we've continued post that pandemic funding. Also, we have an annual allotment that goes towards some ADA improvements. We also have a home weatherization and solar installment program that's been funded under ARPA, a million dollars under ARPA. The eviction prevention pilot is about $350,000. It's worth also noting that we have our Prosperity Neighborhoods Program, which does a variety of different things in our disadvantaged neighborhoods, but we've set aside several million dollars the last couple of years to get at priorities as they're identified by our community in these neighborhoods, as well as by staff in these neighborhoods. And then I would also reflect that we have other funding from our entitlements. HOPWA funding that also, about a million dollars, goes towards housing at-risk individuals. And then, lastly, with the home weatherization and solar programs under the TCC program, that's about $7.5 million. It's going to really benefit our disadvantaged communities identified in the TCC application to do a lot of good work in those areas, as well as there's a displacement avoidance allocation within the TCC project that's almost a million dollars. And so we do have significant investments into these areas and spaces that make sense for the city. But we were looking at if, you know, there are additional programs, what would we recommend as, you know, the next set of priorities? And so I've been noting some of these different funding sources. I apologize, that slide was reflective of the comments I was just making, but we do have a number of different funding sources that we use to work on stabilization and prevention work. As we looked at, because following the June and July meetings, the direction from council was to really, you know, go and do research about what would be those programs, again, that could have the biggest impact. So, again, we looked at our plans, we looked at other cities, what are best practices happening in other cities. We also looked at new emerging and promising practices because this is a space where there's a lot of attention right now in housing and prevention. And we also looked at what data that we had from our existing programs and the beginnings of our pilot programs, including the eviction prevention program. It's also worth noting that our... We took a hard look at our partner agency programs. There are many agencies that are providing services within the metropolitan area in the city of Bakersfield. There are housing navigation services, there are rental assistance and deposit programs in other entities. There's also different counseling and supportive services all the way to utility assistance and food assistance. And so you might note some of these are areas that, you know, probably wouldn't be as relevant to city, and that's appropriate. These are from many of our partner agencies, but we also wanted to think about what are those types of programs that are best connected to the levers, the policy levers, and enforcement levers that the city has more influence on to try and fit or fill some of the remaining gaps in our overall support systems. But it's important to note that there are many entities throughout this community, and those include entities like the Community Action Partnership of Kern, who runs the 2-on-1 system. We have United Way, we have Habitat for Humanity, the Housing Authority. We also have, I should look at my notes. Of course, folks like Mercy House, even though they're a contractee of the city, they also are running important programs, becoming a Calaim Funding Administrator. And then of note, also Kern Health Systems has what is their Community Support Services Program. And so all clients of Medi-Cal under our public health care provider, they are eligible for numerous services under the Community Support Services. And so we wanted to look at what are the services that are already there? We don't look to duplicate services, but rather complement the different services that are out there. I would note that there are programs that probably could benefit from additional resources, additional coordination amongst the different partners. But there are numerous services that are provided by our many good partner agencies. We wanted to take that into account and also determining, you know, if we were to fund some additional programs at the city level, what makes the most sense. So just a quick reflection, and this list won't be a surprise. We shared this with you in July, that we said these are the programs we're going to go take a look at, and these are the programs that we did take a look at. We looked at habitability and substandard issues. Would it make sense to do additional rental assistance? Do we want to start looking at hotels and motels a little more proactively? Utilizing the Community Land Trust? More expansion of some of our existing programs, residential facade improvements? Expansion of eviction prevention? And also just looking at our longer-range strategic land use policies? From, again, all of that analysis, we looked again at those things that we're going to provide. We think the biggest return on value. We also were wanting to be reflective, this is a one-time funding source, and we can pilot some programs, but I want to make sure that we can get some data and see some outcomes before we're committed on large dollar amounts on programs assuring the ability of whether or not we can continue to sustain that funding. And also look at, again, those programs that we feel there is the greatest need. And so what we've recommended in your admin report and what's here today is these four programs. One of the biggest pieces of feedback from GBLA so far in their workshops and outreach is that almost 80% of the complaints that they receive are related to habitability. They're not necessarily related to a current, you know, legal action being taken against them by a landlord. It was really about habitability. And so, again, those are also areas where the city does have both enforcement and policy levers that we can pull to make an impact. And so we saw those as the areas of greatest opportunity to shore up programming. And so in consultation with Phil Burns, we talked about, you know, could we leverage code enforcement staff to be collaborative but also proactive in addressing some of the complaints and challenges around habitability? But we also don't want that to have impacts on our regular complaint-based code enforcement. As council knows, we have increased our capacity there, but we still have typically backlogs in code enforcement follow-ups to do. And so we're proposing for a time-limited period to contract for additional support around code enforcement to get out and address some of the issues that have been brought to our attention through this additional outreach and awareness around habitability. The second piece is to take funds and create a grant program that would allow us to address some of the substandard conditions in housing that are brought, you know, again, to our attention either through code enforcement action or through referrals that come from GBLA, and work out a way to make fixes. I will acknowledge to council that that is a important balance to strike because we don't want to reward individuals who have not taken good care of their properties. But the flip side of that equation is individuals who may be at risk and hard to house could be out on the streets because that property had a substandard condition, was red-tagged, closed. And that is the opposite of the intent of this program, is to try and keep people housed, but address those substandard circumstances. And so we're already in discussions with the council go-ahead tonight to design a program that would allow for grants, that would address those habitability issues on behalf of the tenants, but also kind of work with those property owners to ensure their ongoing compliance and that they continue to maintain that unit in good condition over time. As, for example, we're contemplating a forgivable loan or forgivable grant that gives us the ability to confirm over time that those habitable conditions have been maintained. And if so, then that, you know, grant or loan obligation to payback goes away. That way, it benefits, again, the tenant, but has some accountability for the property owners. Lastly, two small funding allocations. I'll go to the last one first, which was just in response of council conversation on this topic back in July, was that as we have allocated funds for the eviction prevention program that allows for legal assistance and counseling for tenants, that there are at times landlords who also are not resource-rich in the ability to understand some of the rules and laws and also need some advice at times. I would say that the feedback from the community and from council related to this, and staff related to this topic, is that it is not intended for anyone and everyone, that there are those larger corporations that have the ability to provide for their own advice and counsel, but that we have many sole proprietors or families or individuals that have one, maybe two, properties. We would recommend putting a limit that... And currently, the discussion that we've been having is four units or less, that a landlord would be able to access some of this legal guidance and counsel so that there, again, is some parity between those who can get representation or guidance from GBLA. And as GBLA had communicated, they're not able to do that for conflict of interest for landlords, that we would have a service that was available to landlords to be able to get that guidance and counsel. We, it was curious, through some of our outreach efforts, that we found that even, you know, some community groups who communicated that there were families that had, you know, tried to build equity and some generational wealth through a family home, but they are now renting that home out to someone and that may not be as, again, sophisticated as someone who's, you know, been in the business a long time, and that they wouldn't want necessarily those individuals to be at a disadvantage in a challenging legal situation. And then the last piece is, as I noted, there are many resources in this community. And it has become evident through our conversations and research that there's not as much awareness about all the resources that are available, and coordination amongst the different partners is good, but could even be strengthened further. And so we wanted to have a small funding amount set aside to help us work with community to increase the awareness about all the resources that are available and actually have well-trained messengers that as a question comes up, you know, who can help with rental assistance? Or who can help with the legal assistance? It tends to be different individuals, different organizations or agencies, and it can be difficult to navigate finding who can help them with the different scenarios. And we wanted to design some, again, training and engagement with the community to increase the level of awareness, high level of awareness with trusted messengers who can be go-tos in the community to direct and orient folks to where all these resources are available. And it's just about, really about connectivity and getting access to those resources. So in conclusion, just wanted to reflect, there were other programs that we did look at, and we think that there could have promise. And I would note the leveraging, again, of the Community Land Trust. We expect that to happen. We'll continue to build out the Community Land Trust. But we have, you know, notable ARPA funding that's going into the land trust to help us work in that space. We also did some research on residential facade improvement grants. We think there's promise to that, but that these four items are more quickly actionable. And we think that there could be some prosperity neighborhood funds that could be made available to help with those residential facade improvement grants as they're designed. And then lastly, again, the Residential Hotel Motel Inspection Program. We think that that is something that we need to do some more homework on and could be a next step, but that these four areas, at least for this initial funding allocation from the ARPA savings, made the most sense to recommend to council as those items that we think will, again, have the biggest return on value for those dollars. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We'll go to the public now. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding New Business, Item 12A?
Merrick, we've received several, five public speaker cards. The first public speaker is Wendell Wesley Jr., followed by Shar Thompson, followed by Ash Hung.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Wendell Wesley Jr. And this funding for landlords was initially intended to protect and assist tenants from being wrongfully evicted. And a lot of times what happens, I know we're talking about, tenants are having... And a lot of times what happens, I know we're talking about, tenants are having issues with habitability, and that's the main problem, but it spins when a tenant complains, and they complain a second time and a third time, and nothing's getting done, and now they start looking for ways to force them out, even up to including letting their place go to rack and ruin, and now we're going to pay to have them have assistance for it? It just seems that it's just another way to help those who want to pad their own pockets, create more wealth, to push people out on the streets. We already have a housing problem already, and we've already had the discussion where it's cheaper to keep people housed rather than having them put out on the street. So I would urge the council to rethink this. As a property owner, you could take the equity from your property, and if you have to go to litigation or court, it's decided in your favor, then that court's going to be waived and pushed on to the person who maybe ruined your property. But other than that, they have something at their disposal already. It's their property. So that money is better served and better needed for the people that need it most. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Shar Thompson, followed by Ash Hung, followed by Sandra Melgoza.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, Bakersfield Council Mayor. I'm Shar Thompson. I'm the Central Valley Regional Coordinator with Tenants Together. We're a statewide coalition, Tenants Rights Coalition, and in the last two and a half years, I have been working alongside your constituents in regards to the formation of a tenants' union that is focusing on educating their neighbors on their rights to urge you to pass programs to help better their odds at keeping their housing secure, safe, decent, and affordable, along with organizing skills to ensure that they themselves and their neighbors remain housed. I also partner alongside many of your local organizations such as Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, Kern Building Healthy Communities, and Faith in the Valley, just to name a few. I stand here with the people who have brought in their courage to look you in the eye and say that the $100,000, $100,000 that you are allocating to line the pockets of landlords is bad business, very landlord biased and not great for all your constituents, and which would also directly make the housing crisis here even worse. I feel that this allocation should be contributed to the Right to Counsel Program currently in place and to extend the restriction of who it serves. The program should encompass the education for both tenants and landlords already. There was recently a study done in LA and in Burbank to prove that landlords are doing just fine in providing their own legal assistance and representing themselves in court, which in turn allows for the tenants on the defense to be placed out of a home. Small landlords are not struggling with this, even in these rent-controlled cities. They are ending up with more than what their loss was, and I'm open to having further discussion and providing these reports. Please remind yourself that 2% of the landlords actually need the support for education or representation in litigation. 98% of tenants actually need this program. If there is money to throw at this issue to incentivize landlords, the obvious solution is to keep someone housed by paying the rent through a rental assistance program versus just giving the landlords a separate program or money to learn loopholes on how to evict more tenants. I, again, urge you to reconsider the $100,000 in allocation to landlord incentives. Lastly, if you want support in enforcing AB 838 to improve your inspection services or to better understand the law that was implemented, please feel free to reach out. I left my phone number on the comment card. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ash Hung, followed by Sandra Melgoza, followed by Kev M.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Ash Huang. I live in southwest Bakersfield, and I'm a fellow at the ACLU of Southern California working to support houseless people in Bakersfield and Kern County. I urge the city today to remove and reallocate the $100,000 earmarked for landlord legal assistance from the Neighborhood Stabilization and Prevention Program Plan. Allocating funds for landlord legal assistance will only increase the number of people forced to sleep on the street. Last year, 380 people in Kern County lost their homes and became unhoused for the first time, many of them in Bakersfield. The lack of affordable housing is a large cause of that growth, with about 40% of interviewed unhoused residents citing unaffordability and eviction as the reason for their houselessness. To make matters worse, less than 2% of tenants in Kern County are represented in housing court compared to an overwhelming 70% of landlords. This means tenants are often pushed through the eviction process without knowing their rights. Many fail to respond within the five-day timeline to challenge an eviction and are evicted through default. This results in more houselessness and greater burdens on city's social support services and code compliance resources. Even short-term periods of housing instability have long-lasting impacts on people's health and well-being. We shouldn't be talking about the disparity between well-resourced and less-resourced landlords. We should be talking about the vast disparity of resources already available to landlords and tenants, which means that landlords already vigorously pursue their interests in court. Rather than funding landlord legal assistance, the city should invest this funding in solutions to help tenants stay in their homes and avoid ending up unhoused. I ask the city to remove the landlord legal assistance program and use the $100,000 in ways that truly stabilize and benefit our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I also have another speaker card, so.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is Sandra.
Can you just reset the clock, please?
Thank you. My name is Sandra Melgoza Placencia, and I am a current policy advocate of Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Leadership Council partner organizations and residents come here tonight to urge the city council to remove the landlord legal assistance program from the neighborhood stabilization programs. Failure to remove the program will result in an increase in homelessness and will conflict with the efforts from the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homelessness Committee's 10-year plan to end homelessness. Funding this program will be a misuse of ARPA funding and may be a violation of the city's duty to affirmatively further fair housing. The landlord legal assistance program will provide resources for landlords to facilitate the continual displacement and evictions tenants are forced to encounter. Tenants already have incredibly scarce resources and a lack of awareness of their rights and a minimal access to representation. Adoption of this program would further harm and directly displace residents specifically in southeast and central Bakersfield. These communities are identified as RECAPs and the most housing impacted, in particular more prone to displacement. Moving forward with this program will certify that Ward 1 and 2 residents will be most at risk of displacement at the hands of landlords. This is a violation to the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. Where will these folks go? With the vacancy rate at less than 2%, failure to meet RIN numbers and a lack of shelter space, the city is directly facilitating and funding the displacement of families and children who have nowhere to go. The Bakersfield Kern Regional Homelessness Committee's 10-year plan focuses on ending homelessness and states preventing people from losing their housing is obviously more humane and cost-effective than having to help them rebuild their lives after they become homeless. Facilitating interest into homelessness conflicts this plan's goal, which the city has signed on to and agreed to follow. Lastly, ARPA funds are designated to address impacts from the pandemic, one of which has been housing instability. Funding this program with ARPA will be a misuse of funds as it will create more housing instability rather than address it. We ask the city council to consider the detrimental impacts to human life and the impacts to the city's fiscal sustainability, as it will find that increasing homelessness with this program will eventually create a higher cost burden to the city and taxpayers. We urge the city council to remove the landlord legal assistance program and use the funding for parks, recreational centers.
Ms. Placencia, your time's up. Go ahead and just finish up what you have right there.
Or infrastructure improvements for southeast Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kev M., followed by Mariella Vega.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, council.
Can you speak up a little, just get a little closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to share my experience as a resident and a renter in Bakersfield as to why I'm against the landlord assistance program. And that's because from my whole life, as far as I can remember, my family has rented, and that has not been easy. We've faced rent hikes, we've faced evictions for nefarious reasons, we've faced negligence, and yet we didn't have any legal representation for the longest time. And what I find, not just for ourselves, but for a lot of other residents in Bakersfield, it is the threat of legal action, it is the phrase, "If this doesn't get fixed, I will have to sue you or I will take you to court," that gets a lot of landlords to even do something. So by offering this program, this funding to landlords, you're inherently getting rid of a bit of leverage that people in the community have against their landlords for them to take action. And even then, I'm just, I know that Christian Clegg mentioned that this is for people like landlords that are not so well-off, like that have four units or less, but I'm inherently against someone so uneducated, so uninformed, becoming a landlord. For many of us to make our incomes, for many of us to have jobs, we need experience, we need to go to school, we need training, and just because someone has access to property, to land, doesn't mean they should be able to take resources, to take their money from other people and make their income off of them, even if it is just a few properties. Because these people need to be educated, they need to not be able to exploit their residence of Bakersfield without being educated. And I think $100,000 is preposterous. There was originally the talks, I forgot the exact number that was being mentioned, but earlier when the eviction prevention program was being talked about, there was a higher number than was being given now, and that was just an issue.
Kev, your time's up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
That was such an issue, but yet it's so easy that when it comes to landlords, you're willing to just hand out so much money for them. So please reconsider this, don't put it as part of this funding, and think of other actions that you can take that have been given.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mariella Vega.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members and staff. My name is Mariella Vega, and I'm here today with Faith in the Valley, and I'm here today to speak against the proposed allocation for the landlord legal assistance. This allocation fails to prioritize those people who need the help the most, which are tenants and not landlords. We already know that, for example, when it comes to landlords and eviction cases, they are well-represented, with 72% landlords having legal representation compared to less than 2% of the tenants. Allocating money to assist the landlords could potentially increase more evictions and more families and individuals being displaced in our community. So this funding, I urge the councils, that this funding could be used towards improving our community and not harming our community. So I really urge the council to reconsider this allocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. And now we'll return it to council, council member Cor.
Christian, do we have data on the types of cases that GBLA has seen so far within the eviction prevention program?
I can speak to a couple of data points and then ask Ms. Byers if she has more that she can add to. At this point, GBLA has largely been doing workshops. They've done two workshops per month since they began. And by the way, we have some landlords who have attended those workshops, but principally they've been tenants who attended those workshops. But I don't believe that we have data yet on the specific types of cases where they're doing some of that technical assistance. It's been mostly the data we have around the workshops, but if you have anything to add, Ms. Byers?
That's correct. They are hosting to a month English and Spanish. We've been doing them in a variety of locations, making sure that we get into all of the neighborhoods in Bakersfield. Their first reporting is due as a quarterly report, and so we're into month two and don't yet have that information. Staff does meet with them at least once a month to have conversations. The first trainings that they've done so far is really the process of if you get that eviction notice, what does the correct one look like? We will be working with code enforcement to do some presentations about habitability, and so we have been working very closely with GBLA for tenant rights and kind of moving through the process and being sure that we educate the community, but we don't have statistics yet on the type of cases they've received.
Okay. And you had shared that GBLA had shared the need for the landlord assistance fund being a potential source of conflicts of interest. Have they seen, have they had landlords, you said some of them have attended the workshops, have some of the landlords also approached them for assistance?
No, they haven't. So we do have a staff member that attends the education. I have attended one of them as well, and there was a landlord. They were just listening to the information and they just wanted to make sure that they knew the process as well. The one that I met with was a small tenant owner, or a long, a small landlord. I'm all mixed up on my words. She only owned a couple of units, and she just wanted to make sure. I think those that are attending the education want to understand the process on both sides because there are tenants and landlord rights and responsibilities.
Okay. What do landlords currently do without this program existing? Which, are they coming to code enforcement when they have questions around, you know, if they're following the rules and regulations? Or is it, I'm assuming it's only in response, it's not really like preventative in maintaining quality housing? Is it only when they're cited? Or where would a landlord potentially go if, today I'm a landlord, which city department am I coming to if I'm like, am I a good landlord? And am I following all the rules, maintaining my business and properties in a way that I should be?
I think, Councilwoman, that's a fair question. We don't necessarily, we haven't created a filter to sort of catch some of those questions because they are, you're right, they're usually reactive, they're fairly one-off case by case. I think we sometimes do get questions to business licensing, code enforcement, but I think by and large, folks are actually going to, you know, other, you know, resources, whether they, you know, there are some associations that they could ask questions to. Also, you know, they could, you know, approach, you know, the Bar Association sometimes offers, you know, workshops, but I think in large part, the small ones, there's not necessarily an easy place for them to know where to go. And so we do get some questions here and there, and I'll admit that I don't think we kind of filter those out and pull them all into one place. Each, you know, area that they kind of end up, you know, asking, we do our best and kind of, you know, refer them someplace else.
I wonder if this is a process we could create within development services when a landlord comes online with their property, and that is like training that we build into our city departments so landlords know from the get-go what their expectations are within the city of being a good landlord that maintains quality housing. If that is, you know, as a property owner or a small business owner, you know, there's certain standards you have to maintain as a, within your commercial property, so in the same way, if you're maintaining your business. I would be curious to explore a process that can be created within development services, within our city departments that would allow there to be a more permanent solution also to make sure that we as a city know how quality housing is being maintained, whether it's through various databases that exist. But I feel this is also a process that we could create within our city departments in training landlords, because we, they have to encounter this, some of our city departments at some way, shape, or form, so maybe we can filter through the process from step one to step 12. If I'm a new landlord, even if it's four units or 50, what are trainings that can be built in there as well? But I'm glad to hear the partnership with GBLA is producing the goal that we had intended, and it's meeting the intention of spreading information, and it's also good to hear that some landlords are attending and getting the information that they need, and I'm excited to see us build on that program as well.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I think you brought up some good points. A couple of different thoughts. The city attorney was nice to remind me, of course, we have our multifamily crime-free housing program, which the police department puts on. It is more designed and targeted for larger units, and it's more about trying to address, you know, crime prevention through environmental design and some other factors, but we do have that training program that exists today. As far as sort of the expectations for new individuals who may be renting out a property, it depends on the type of unit. We don't necessarily have a rental unit registry in the city, and so we're not always aware of those activities, and under our current code, they're not always obligated to, you know, share that. Of course, there are business licenses that we have that cover some of this work, and obviously the larger units, we do have, you know, some, you know, requirements to, for them to do certain documentation, but as our process is outlined today, there's not one shop that everyone goes through that rents a property, but I think that, I mean, that's part of your suggestion, but I was just clarifying that we don't necessarily have a one, one department that they all go through, but we could look at ways to better track and then provide materials and training. training. I think my last thought is, I think there's a lot of wisdom to having a more consistent way of sharing information of what their obligations are from habitability and business licensing and all of that. To just this point, and you didn't suggest this, but wanted to clarify that I don't think that we would want to be in a position where we're providing any legal, technical assistance. We'd tell them what the rules are and, you know, what their obligations are, but I wouldn't want necessarily the liability of the city providing some of that from our direct departments. But I think there's a lot of wisdom to creating a more standard process of sharing that information for landlords that makes a lot of sense.
I feel like, I feel it hits on some of the more preventative, it's a more preventative approach that we then need code enforcement involved. We need to create something around habitability or whatever the landlord assistance fund aims to address in being preventative and providing that information through our city departments that exist. I feel it touches on all of the different points and can, if that's a system that we can develop internally and hopefully prevent some of the bad actors. I mean, it's, of course, there's, it's on both sides, but I would just hope that we can explore a process that then we can utilize funds where they're most dire. So, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for you, Mr. Clegg. ARPA funds, those are, those were given to us one time.
Correct.
And for specific purposes, correct?
Correct, Councilmember.
And so what is the balance in, what did we start with? What is our balance today?
A very good question. I'll give you a pretty good sketch, I think, but it won't be to the dollar. So we started with about $94 million in ARPA funding. We allocated large portions of that funding to homelessness, to housing and blighted property. We've also spent on actually creating public, healthy public spaces like parks, addressing safe routes to schools so that people could get to public spaces. We've also spent on actually city staff times, city staff, fire staff in particular, who've been responding to individuals with health, you know, response calls, as well as some of extending utilities to areas that don't have access to, you know, water and sewer was one of the other, you know, categories. And so as we are getting close to the final spend down of ARPA, we've identified a few areas where we don't think that we're going to spend the full amount. We've, we actually are, as of today, we're closer to only halfway spend down on all of the ARPA, but we have some very large allocations like our, an allocation to the community land trust to purchase properties and build infill properties. That's a large allocation that's coming forward. And we have some funds for park improvements, Emerald Cape Park, and so we're in a large spend down of dollars between now and December of this year that would spend down all of our funds or have them at least allocated to projects that will get spent down over the next two years. And so we've identified about, the reason we had this $1.2 million in front of council is that we identified savings in ARPA from a couple of programs that weren't going to spend all the way down. And so then these savings were available to allocate to, to other council priorities. And we don't think that there's going to be much other savings. There might be a little bit of savings that we identify between again now and December, but otherwise, we, we feel like we're going to be able to allocate or spend down the rest of those ARPA dollars in the next few months.
Well, when I look at this, I know where this originated from because this, to even go into this kind of research and decide where we can spend money, but it originated because there was talk on the dais that we, that we wanted to increase the eviction program. And we, as a city council, voted that we were going to allocate $350,000 to start with, let it be a pilot program, you know, develop the data on it to see if that's something that we want to. Next year, put in the budget and add to that. I feel like what I'm hearing, and, and there were some points that are, that you all brought up tonight that I was in agreement with, what I'm hearing is, we, we've got, we've got money to spend, let's figure out some way to do it. And I'm not convinced, I mean, some of these things that you're, you're talking about with ARPA dollars are not sustainable. We may not, we may get, get something started and may not be able to sustain it because we don't have ARPA dollars, say, next year. So I wouldn't say that I'm in favor of this spending because I feel like those ARPA dollars are in a so-called savings account that we need to, that could be guarded for something that is even more necessary. Because you laid out tonight, there is program after program after program, which I'm very grateful for, that is already happening in the city, not just within city government, but also private money that is doing a lot in this community. And as you've said, we've spent a lot of our ARPA funds on homelessness, which we've needed to do. But I just can't, I, I just feel like this is really not necessary when there's already 1.771, $432,000 or a million in the prevention and stabilization programs now as we, as we speak. The other thing that I want to address is with respect to my colleague, but more government is not better. And when you start in a capitalistic society, you start mandating regulation, and we as a city begin to mandate regulation every time somebody buys a rental property, that they have to register. And now the city is to begin to manage all these landlords and make sure that is government overreach to the max. So I could not sit here and listen to that without bringing to the attention of the public in this city that we have no business getting in that kind of business to where we start managing landlords. That's, that's not the right thing to do as a city. Now, we can, we can mitigate some of these things that we're talking about through pilot program and some of this other stuff, but to have a mandatory registry of landlords, that is way government overreach. I could never support such a thing, and I wanted it to go on record that I would never support such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray.
Vice Mayor. I'm going to try to be quick here. So first, in response to Councilmember Gray, ARPA has certain spending timetables. For example, we have to obligate all of our ARPA funds by the end of this year. We also have to expend all of those funds by the end of December 2026. So I appreciate the idea of savings, and I join you in wanting to be responsible and build up our reserve funds as it relates to the general fund, but when it comes to these federal ARPA funds, there are deadlines for us to expend those dollars, or we have to turn them back to the federal government. And I, for one, believe that we should spend these dollars locally to help benefit the families that we represent. Number two is that, you know, I will say publicly that I joined Mr. Clegg in sort of providing some input in, in developing the framework for this neighborhood stabilization fund. And, and I think my intent is a bit different than, than what Councilmember Gray had articulated in that my hope was that we could actually stabilize neighborhoods. There are many people in crisis situations, and we know that because of the pandemic, it only accelerated some of the economic impacts, housing impacts for some of our most disadvantaged neighborhoods and those families that live within them. And so a lot of these items really speak to that point, that we, that we ought to actually move into some strategies while we have these limited dollars in order to help those who are experiencing a crisis even still. And there are many people. I hear from my constituents every day. I do have a question, though, regarding the landlord assistance fund. We say landlord assistance, I just want to clarify, what type of assistance are we actually considering here? Education, someone, some are insinuating this is legal assistance, but $100,000 for legal assistance is not going to get us very far. What, what type of assistance are we really talking about here?
I think, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council, this, and I apologize for the labeling, we've, we had called it a couple of different things, and, and the labeling is not perfect, but it was intended to be in response to the council feedback. And the last time that we brought up, you know, this topic, there was a request from council to develop a program that would provide some technical legal assistance to landlords similar to the technical legal assistance they get from GBLA as, as tenants. And so this was intended to meet that request. As I understand both the council direction, but also my recommendation as staff is that, you know, this is not to provide landlords with a lawyer to go to court. That's not what this is, similar to the tenant eviction prevention program, and so that they can have technical assistance. It would be potentially some workshops, although they can attend the workshops at GBLA, but it's also so they have someone ask questions. Because as we designed the program with GBLA, their feedback was, sure, anybody can come to the workshop, but if they come and ask us questions, we can't give them advice. And this is so that they would have some place where they could go and ask for some advice. Again, they won't be their lawyers or their legal representation, but they could, they could ask questions and get some legal advice. And again, within a certain set of parameters we create.
So what's the nexus, in staff's opinion, between assistance for landlords and neighborhood stabilization?
For us, it was more so about, again, being responsive to the council direction when we had this topic in the last conversation.
I appreciate that, because I'm, I'm really struggling to find the nexus between this landlord assistance and neighborhood stabilization. And so it's hard for me to move forward for that purpose with respect to these ARPA dollars and these ARPA funds, which are intended for disadvantaged communities. Perhaps if the council wanted to consider another funding source, that would be a different consideration. But given the context that these are ARPA federal dollars for disadvantaged neighborhoods, I'm really struggling to find how this is an appropriate use of dollars, first and foremost. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I thought was a great point that I think Mr. Wesley mentioned, was that there are dollars set aside, $550,000 for a habitability program, which ostensibly will support landlords because they will be, those, those grants will go to landlords to help them improve their properties. And in this way, I can support that program because the renters, the families that I represent, will ultimately be beneficiaries of that, if those improvements. So I'm going to make a motion tonight that we move forward with this ARPA funding, this neighborhood stabilization programming framework, and then we, with the exception of the $100,000 for the landlord assistance fund, and we move that back into safe and healthy communities for further consideration.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also try to keep my comments short and sweet. I am in support of the Vice Mayor's motion and many of the comments that he and both Councilmember Cor made. I'll just make one final point, which is that, you know, in this case, I think we have to compare for the sake of prioritizing where the dollars should go. In my last testimony, I shared that over a two-year period, there were 2,400 individuals throughout the county, many of those in the city of Bakersfield, who were evicted from their homes. And the question that I asked the public to consider is, will those individuals likely end up on our streets? And in many cases, and in potentially most cases, the answer is yes. Now, let's look at the opposite consideration. If we are looking to provide some assistance to landlords who maybe own a couple of investment properties, if they are not able to successfully evict a tenant of theirs, or if they have a squatter, my question to you is the same. Will they end up on the streets of Bakersfield? And I think it's very clear that the answer to that is no. And the reality is, $350,000 that we allocated to address the 2,400 individuals who lost their housing is not enough. I think that was clear. That was the original intention of this funding, and I think it's, it's very clear that while the other three allocations are in complete alignment and are really going to help stabilize our community, I think that this fourth one, providing assistance to landlords, is not. So with that, I just want to say thank you for the motion, Vice Mayor. I also want to say thank you to the advocates who brought this conversation forward to the council back in June. I realize that there was a delay. Unfortunately, this is how government works. It takes time, but it doesn't get done unless you have great leadership like that at, at the top, like Christian Clegg. So just want to say thank you all for continuing to see us, see this go through the process, and thank you for your continued advocacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask if the workshops, which I think are the best tool we have, could incorporate basically teaching landlords and tenants what their obligations and rights are, because most of the problems, I think, come from either both parties not knowing what their obligations are and what the rights are. So I was hoping, because I, I thought the proposal as it came in was good from staff, that we could use some of the, especially the landlord allocation, to combine these workshops, have more workshops. I didn't really see a workshop for a landlord and a workshop for a tenant. It seems to me that it's one law, and that we could have workshops where all were invited, and that would be a little more efficient way to do this, because I think the whole problem here is ignorance on both parties. Landlords does as much, you know, you have obligations, and tenants obligations, and I think the confusion is, is they don't really know what they are. So my thought was, I like the proposal the way it was, and, but that these, that we somehow merge these workshops to cover both, the rights of tenants and landlords, the obligations, and educate the community. So do you have any, is there any comment to that?
Yeah. So some of the upcoming meetings, the State of California Housing is Key provides the information, and it is called the Tenant and Landlord's Rights and Responsibilities. And within that, it gives two individuals, both landlords and tenants, when you move in, what is the process? You have five days to fill out the form that shows what's deficient in the unit. They're going to take that at the end of the rental agreement, and from that, those items get discussed. But it goes through, like, what do you do if there's a problem? It teaches tenants that if your stove isn't working, you still need to pay your rent because that's where there's a lot of evictions happening also, is tenants won't pay their rent thinking that they're going to get their landlord to act, and that's why we have code enforcement involved, is very specifically from the tenant and landlord's rights and responsibility. And so GBLA is going to be having some sessions on knowing what that is. The landlord needs to know what they are responsible for doing, but there's also things that tenants are responsible. And so getting that information out there is the best way for both of these entities to understand their rights and their responsibilities. Landlords are responsible for vector control. They're responsible for infestations, things like that. You can do sprays at least once a month, and that is a landlord responsibility. But then tenants are responsibilities also to keep the unit in a clean and safe manner as well. So teaching both entities is a way to get to some of the things that you're speaking to and having joint education.
To just add a little bit, Councilmember Freeman, if I may, just really quickly, I think that, to summarize the, the answer for your question, yes, the workshops are combined, can be combined. We could even do additional outreach to make sure landlords are, you know, feeling invited to those workshops. I think the big distinction is, if they have additional questions that they want to ask on a case-by-case basis for technical that they want to ask on a case-by-case basis for technical assistance, that's where there's a difference. But the workshops can be done together.
Well, I like the idea in staff's recommendation that there was some money. And it really says it's for landlord, but I kind of like it for the combined education myself. There's, we don't take all the money away from trying to educate the landlords. That's why I thought that was good to be in there. So for that reason, I kind of support staff's recommendation. And I guess, protocol, somebody has to make a motion to see if anybody else does or not. So I'd make a motion to approve the allocations as presented by, in staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Corr.
I guess in taking in the conversation that we're having here, as well as staff's recommendation, I think the question really on the table is, what are the best use of these dollars here? And as our advocates have shared as well, and kind of what we're hearing from the workshops, it sounds like the landlords are attending these workshops without enormous effort made to do outreach. And if they are hearing the concerns of tenants, I feel that the landlords that are attending are able to connect and are doing their due diligence. So the space is being provided to them. And these dollars specifically do have a better use than to kind of address some of the more dire or to actually address, you know, the more disadvantaged communities. But I do think it's our responsibility as government. Government is for the people. It's for all the people. And we need to be efficient and responsible. And it is our responsibility. And we fall short in our responsibility to people when we do not have the systems that are able to serve folks, to all folks. And I think in, I just want to close with responding to my council, my fellow councilmembers' comments. But with all due respect as well, if we are seeing these huge gaps in housing and our housing crisis is cyclical, and I love the points that Councilmember Arias made, is the questions that we're really evaluating is, we want to keep people in their homes, the places that are home for them now in this moment. And is the best use of federal dollars that are coming down to support the most disadvantaged communities, not just our own, but across the nation, for very specific use? How do we keep people in their homes so that we, you know, we're coming up with solutions at different points of our housing crisis? But this is kind of at the root of it, is keeping people in their homes now. And I feel we can do more work to address the gaps that we have within our city governance that would then prevent the need for one-time funds of this sort. It's not a mandated registry. That was not my recommendation. It was more so, just as a business, you open a new business, even the fire department has a checklist of things for you to make sure you have done to open your business. You know, having a checklist for a landlord to be able to know what their responsibilities are and being able to be a good citizen within our society. I think as a city, as the government of the people, that is a responsibility we have as well. So that's what I wanted to add in kind of closing our comments in our conversation here. I am having a technical issue. I feel like my computer has logged itself out.
Just hit the help button.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address, I guess, the, I think I'm in agreement with Councilmember Freeman's position. I think it's naive to think that there aren't bad actors on both sides. Councilmember Arias said, well, if you got a squatter, somebody's still in the house. Well, that's, and then Councilmember Gonzalez said, well, what's good for the neighborhood? Well, it's not good for the neighborhood to have squatters in the neighborhood. They're not good neighbors. And so I think the idea that Councilmember Freeman stated that, you know, it really is education to both sides is what makes sense to me. And maybe, you know, there's a portion, and I don't know how to allocate it, but a portion of that is just to the joint educational seminars that are saying, you know, you're responsible for this and you're responsible for that. But if a landlord has a squatter and needs some assistance, then it is better for the neighborhood if they're able to get some assistance.
If I may, Councilmember Smith, I hope this is responsive, even though you didn't ask a particular question. How we typically move, would move after an action like this is that we would, for example, the first two items on that four-item bullet list that are not, I think, you know, in discussion, that there's broad agreement on those two, we would put out an RFP and we would seek those services for this last item, this $100,000, to just, to offer a potential path forward for council. A motion could include, say, let's amend the contract with GBLA to add dollars from that $100,000 for additional workshops. And maybe that's $50,000 or $75,000 and retain a smaller portion that we could still put an RFP out for the very limited technical assistance. That was what we would also do if we were going to get some legal technical assistance for, you know, again, a narrow set of parameters for landlords. We would do an RFP for those services. You could split that funding. And I would also, as the comments have been carrying forward, has reminded me of some conversation we had as staff as well, that the nexus for ARPA funding could be a challenge depending on what the Qualified Census Tract might be for that particular landlord or that particular property. We could also allocate funding from a different source. We could put $100,000 addition to the GBLA contract for more workshops and then identify some additional funding from one of our other housing sources within economic and community development to provide some focused technical assistance to landlords that meets the same intent but a different funding source. So those are some options.
Thank you. I guess, I'm going to get into the motion-making with everybody else. I think your option of, you know, let's just put the $100,000 into the GBLA contract and more workshops, because that seems to be the most effective and is helping the most people and helps both sides. And then, you know, make a referral to staff to find another avenue to perhaps help the small amount of landlords that need assistance.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Right, so we will go, I don't see, oh, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
For what it's worth, I just want to reiterate my motion, which is will be the last to be considered tonight. But that was to approve the Neighborhood Stabilization Framework presented by staff, except for that Landlord Assistance Fund. That question would be referred to committee to then tease out some of these things that we're trying to determine at the dice here and now. I think it's more appropriate to send it to safe and healthy communities. So that is my motion on the table.
Okay.
I would just, Mayor, if I could, I would just ask Councilmember Smith if that addresses his question. Because some of that, I think the Vice Mayor is correct. Some of those issues could be resolved and brought back. But if there's a timing issue and that doesn't address your motion, so be it.
Councilmember Smith.
No, I think my motion I'm happy with is that we're expanding the GBLA contract.
Councilmember Freeman.
To have more workshops. I need to hear your motion.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Just, I fully understand it, and I'm not hearing very well.
To expand the GBLA contract with the $100,000 that is shown here for more workshops, which goes to educate both sides.
Then I withdraw my motion. I'll support his.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. All right, just to check before we vote, Councilmember Corr, is your technology okay now? We think, all right, if not, we'll take care of it. All right, so you have a motion, which is Councilmember Smith's motion. Please catch your votes.
Motion failed with Vice Mayor Gonzalez, Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Weir, Councilmember Gray, and Councilmember Corr voting no.
Thank you. And so now we will take the next motion, which is the Vice Mayor's motion, since the other was withdrawn. You have a motion? Please catch your votes. We might need to refresh here.
Motion fails with Councilmembers Weir, Smith, Freeman, and Gray voting no.
Thank you. So Madam City Attorney, I see you are going to help us out.
I will try. By operation of law, there is no motion then on the table. I would suggest perhaps the Vice Mayor make a motion as to the three items. And staff can come back on the $100,000 at a later point.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program with the exception of the Landlord Assistance Fund, which staff will come back at a later date.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember, yes, it went away for some reason. Let's, it was Councilmember Arias and something happened. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. Wanted to invite the broader public in the community out to tomorrow night. We're going to be at the Friendship House, where we'll have a small bike rodeo that is going to be intended for younger students and students who attend the Friendship House there on MLK Boulevard. We will then be biking south to Del Oro High School. And we will be having a community meeting to start at 6:00 PM. We're going to be working with a couple of city departments. Thank you, Mr. Howland, for setting that up and just having a great conversation, a good night with the community to talk about all of the great work that's going to be happening along the corridor. So please come out and join us. Again, that's from 3:30. And then the community meeting will be taking place at 6:00 PM at Del Oro. The second is a referral. And before I make it, I just want to say thank you to both Paul Johnson and Development Services Department for identifying an issue along MLK Boulevard, where MLK Boulevard, which used to be named Cottonwood, a referral previously made by my predecessor only extended to Casa Loma along MLK Boulevard now. And so I would like to follow up on that and extend the renaming from Cottonwood to MLK Boulevard, from Casa Loma South all the way to Panama Lane. And so I would like to make that referral and ask staff to take a look at that and bring back some considerations for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick shout out to Recreation and Parks. We just received word this afternoon that the city of Bakersfield will receive $11.9 million for MLK Park. That's exciting, yeah, from the National Park Service. And so this is a federal grant. It's a matching grant. But we're well on our way. I think from our early calculations, we're about a quarter of the way of funding the entire MLK Revitalization and Vision Plan. So kudos to Mr. Anthony, to Mr. Clegg, to all of the folks throughout City Hall who have been part of this project all along and who are working day in and day out to help us reimagine this park and see it transform. And this is certainly great news for southeast Bakersfield. Kudos also to my colleague, Councilmember Arias, who joins me and champions this program, even though it's no longer in his ward. He's still being a great advocate and leader. I thank you for that. Last night, we had a wonderful community meeting in Oleander Sunset to review and discuss some of the issues related to Oak Street, which has had, witnessed many significant issues over the last several months and years. So I want to thank all of the staff who spent their evening with me and dozens of community members. One of the questions that came up was how to establish a historic designation for Oleander Sunset. And so I'd like to make a referral tonight to city staff, including the city attorney's office, to see what designations might exist for historic neighborhoods and how we might be able to apply that to both Oleander and also our Westchester neighborhoods. Number three, we have seen a growing number of structure fires started by arsonists in our community. This is a significant issue. And I believe that we need to add additional arson investigators to our Bakersfield Fire Department. And so I'm going to make a referral tonight that as we look towards our mid-year budget, should funding allow, that we look at adding additional positions related to arson investigators. And that referral, I hope we can chat about that later, Mr. Clegg. This is a serious issue facing not just War II, but all throughout the city. And then finally, we received a letter, both Councilmember Smith and I, from a constituent related to recycling centers and how that continues to be a public nuisance in some specific neighborhoods. And so I think we need to explore what are the, you know, what options we have as a city to address and better regulate recycling centers in our city, within the city limits, both existing recycling centers and those yet to come. And so I'd like to refer that to Legend Lit. Thank you all. Good night.
Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have a huge shout out to the R. Rexon Park, Reagan Parks Department. We had our first community meeting for our newest park in Ward 7, right next to Miller Elementary School. And it was one of the most exciting meetings I've been to as both the community advocate and now in my council role. And we had a huge attendance. And I just really want to commend leadership as well as folks within the department and across our departments who really bring City Hall to the people and to the residents. With, just to paint a scene, within the Miller Elementary cafeteria, we had these large boards of renderings of different facilities and different design options that are available at different parks. And everyone was given a sticker. And if you really wanted something, if you really wanted a certain, you know, shade structure or different types of slides, you put, you know, this was your first choice. So you put a green sticker, red and yellow for second and third choices. And the process was so accessible, whether you spoke English or not, whether you were a kid, whether you were an elder. I thought it was just the most beautiful engagement between government and its residents and constituents. And I know the residents really appreciate it and feel a part of the design process. And I just love that this is, this is our process within the city. And that's a good feeling for residents. And the response is, it's been astronomical even afterwards. And truly, if you build a process like that, like this, people will come. And I'm still getting different ideas. Some of them are a little bit more bold than others. We'll have to talk to some safety folks, but it's really exciting. And I just really wanted to bring at least this highlight to everyone and to be able to share that. And just give my thanks to folks, you know, who continue to work to bring our residents and involve them in a process. What some residents had shared is they kind of just felt like there was someone sitting in the sky who designed a park and, you know, it just showed up in their neighborhood and they didn't realize that they could be so involved in the process. And I said, rest assured, we will bring you the renderings back based on what your feedback was. And now there's also a survey you can take online. So a quick little shout out. If you didn't get the chance to come to the meeting, you can just scan the QR code and give us your feedback as to what you would like to see at your city park. So that process is going on and we're still collecting different feedback from folks. On a not-so-fun note, last week, last city council meeting, I On a not-so-fun note, last week, last city council meeting, I actually missed our city council meeting because I was assisting a woman as, with translations for a domestic violence case that she was going through, and I was actually on my way to the city council meeting and spent the entire, almost the entire night with her. And I have been talking to Chief Terry about how, and Chief also presented on this earlier this year, as to how domestic violence is really growing in our community. And unfortunately, these are probably the highest volume of calls I get as well, as being, you know, a Punjabi speaker, being bilingual, and having the cultural competency to understand maybe why this happens in households and how it persists and the ways in which, you know, folks seeking help, what it takes for them to finally get that help and take that step. It was really unfortunate, and I continue to assist her the best I can, but I also feel like I'm out of resources. And I appreciate even the mayor has assisted me with different cases in the past. And I wanted to make the referral that we kind of assist our ability, or assess our ability to add community liaison specialists within the Bakersfield Police Department, who have not just the cultural competency of like within the Punjabi community, but those communities that are served. Our police department has many things that they have to address. We know that it's a department that has a large responsibility within our society, but this is something that's going severely, I think, unaddressed, under addressed, and these are positions I'd like to see us explore and see what exists elsewhere. I know we have partner organizations, but there, I feel because safety is associated, of course, with our police department, folks come there first. And if there's someone who can meet them there to then be a navigator of sorts to the different partners, I think when people get lost in the process or don't have that follow-up, when they, they need that emergency need, that's when they, you know, they don't stay as committed to the process. So that's one of my referrals as well. And I wanted to also congratulate Rick Anthony and Anthony Valdez, our newest assistant city managers, who are carrying on the great work within our city and who have served in so many different capacities and wearing many different hats within the hat, the roles they have had in the past. I'm just so very excited that you're joining our city leadership as our city continues to grow and really appreciate the fact that our city leadership reflects our entire community as well. So that's something I think that is worth noting, and congratulations, kudos, and best wishes hang in there, and you've got a great support staff. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. The issue that you addressed related to domestic violence certainly is one that in particular communities actually is so severe and growing. So thank you for highlighting that. We know that because of culture, there are some who are very afraid to come forward. So that is extremely important. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the attention and ask Mr. Clegg, there's a veteran group in Bakersfield, and we talked about this, that is wanting to put flags down Truxton Avenue, Avenue of Heroes, I think is what they're wanting to put on those flags, because we have five different veteran memorials on Truxton Avenue. And they have been trying to make headway on this for months. There is an event coming up for Pearl Harbor Day on December 7th, and they would like to see this happen if we possibly could do so, since they've been bringing it to our attention for so long. So what is the update on that?
Yeah, I think, Councilmember Gray, and I'll actually take an opportunity with the full council here to provide an update of where we're going to go, and if there's, if there's council direction, I will receive that direction, but otherwise, we will move with administrative authority to just do this project. There's been a request to hang banners along Truxton Avenue on the banner poles that the city already has that we installed historically, as well as we added some additional during the pandemic, that we would design banners that would, that would say Avenue of Heroes as requested by the veterans group, and that we can go and produce those banners and just hang them up. Not that the cost is actually overly prohibitive, it would be within our administrative authority anyway, but I think something that is sort of a branding or a naming of a city street or way is notable enough. But again, given the desire to do this in a timely manner ahead of a particular date and knowing well the disposition of this council towards supporting veterans in our community, I'm inclined as staff to just move forward and complete that project. So we have had some conversations just in the last couple of weeks to identify a couple of potential vendors. We need to work on the design, and then we'll just get those into production and we'll get them placed in the next couple of months. I think we'll have, I'll have an opportunity to at least at a minimum, share that design with council electronically, and absent any feedback, we'll just keep it moving forward to get it done in the next two months.
Well, that's great news. Thank you. The other thing, Councilmember Gonzalez brought up the recycling centers, and I had talked to this, the city attorney about this, because I've got a problem in Ward Six also at Mingen Stein, and that's going into the neighborhoods there. And so it, there's got to be something that we can do to address this issue. I don't know what it is, but if I would, I'm total agreement with our council member that if we can look at that further, maybe more code enforcement or, or more patrol in those areas or whatever, but they are, they are a hot box for problems. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. City Attorney is requested to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Council and members listening, Mayor, if you're so inclined, I'd like you to consider adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of Dennis Fox. I think most of you know that Dennis Fox was a frequent attendee of our city council meetings and our water board meetings. And to many people, you know, when you looked at Dennis, he was a disheveled older man, but I think to those of us that knew him and many on the council, he, he was a very educated, well-read gentleman. He had a very dry sense of humor, and he, he loved to talk about water. I think he'd keep me here for at least three hours after every council meeting if he could. So I'm sure that if you had an award for someone that attended the most city council meetings and the most water board meetings, Dennis Fox would have received that award many times. His presence will be missed. I am told he passed away peacefully about two weeks ago.
Thank you, Ms. General. And let's observe a moment of silence just in memory of Mr. Fox. Thank you to Mr. Fox for how much he cared for our community. We stand adjourned at 7:31.